Four, one thirty-one, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Notice of this meeting was posted on June twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Call to order, roll call, Eric?
Yes, members of the planning commission today are Mr. Rob Murray, Mr. Gary Jewell, Mr. Rob Talbot, Ms. Denise Patterson, and Mr. Greg Davidson.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting from May fifteenth. Everybody got a copy? Is there any updates or changes that need to be changed? If none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Roll call, Eric?
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson, and Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Okay, for the fun part, item number five, annual election of officers, chair and vice-chair. Do we have any nominations for the chair?
Rob Talbot.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, let's have a roll call for the chair. Eric?
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson, Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Okay, now we need a vice-chair. Do we have nominations for our vice-chair? Second?
Second.
Any, any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, Eric?
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell.
Yes.
Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson, Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
So, we have our chair and vice-chair. We all set. Okay, item number six, discussion and possible action to approve slash deny a zoning change from R two rural residential district to C one commercial limited district, Z twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two. Eric?
Yes, the application today is, like you stated, it's to rezone a piece of property that is located on the southwest corner of Northwest Hundred and Seventy-Eighth and Council Road. And if you go to the next slide there. So, I just wanted to provide more information in regards to just the area itself and what we're talking about. I know many of these folks that are here are familiar with this area as far as the floodplain and just how this area, or just Deer Creek in general, how this floodplain cuts across the northwest part of the county. Now, in this case, we're dealing with Soldier Creek that is just behind this property to the south. But as you go north and east, you have other creeks that get involved, Deer Creek, Bluff Creek, as you continue east, Chisholm Creek. So, obviously, there's, there's quite a bit of floodplain that is out there. And so, on the next map, if I'm not mistaken. No, is that it? Okay. So, on that map there, I just also wanted to show just kind of the zoning there in that particular area. Obviously, the most adjacent thing to the subject property is Carlton Lakes, which is residential subdivision. All those lots in there are two acres. There are some that are adjacent of the floodplain as well. As you get back east of here and south of here, that's when you really get back into a lot of more commercial, more intensive residential development. As you get back towards City of Edmond, and as you go back towards the south, towards Hundred and Sixty-Fourth, you get back to the city of Oklahoma City. So, you have a little bit more development as you get away from the floodplain. So, I just wanted to give everybody just kind of an overall view of what is out there currently in regards to the zoning and just the floodplain in general. I was able to send a couple of protest letters that I had received to the board. I do have quite a bit of, quite a bit more than I wasn't able to send to the board, just because the county was closed on Tuesday. So, I wanted to take this opportunity before I get into just the other explanation in regards to the county's processes with this particular piece of property, for you guys to look at those as well.
Okay, I make a motion to receive the additional protest letters. Roll call, Eric?
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson, and Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
So, Eric, while we're looking at these, can you go into a little more description as to what commercial limited district means?
Absolutely. So, the county has four commercial districts that people can utilize when they're rezoning their property. So, we have rural commercial, we have highway commercial, commercial limited, and commercial general. Commercial general is our most intensive, commercial limited is a step down. And so, if you would like me to, I provided this information in the staff report, but if you would like me to, I can go over those uses in commercial limited to get everybody an idea of what's permitted outright.
Would you like that?
Yes, please.
So, typical things that are allowed are nursing, personal care facilities, community centers, administrative professional offices. You get into animal sales and services, which are typically your grooming, kennels, veterinarian offices. You can have sit-down eating restaurants, but alcohol is not permitted. You can have a small home improvement store. You can have a liquor or package stores, how the county's regulations identify it. Medical services office, so dental, doctors' offices, those type of things. You can have local retail sales. You can have churches, places of worship are allowed in all zoning categories. You can have commercial, we call it commercial amusement, smaller type of movie theater, which I don't think you would have enough space in this particular instance. You can do financial, financial institution, which would be more of your banks, those type of things, a small convenience store, laundry services in regards to dry cleaning, medical services in regards to urgent cares. And you can have personal services, and you can have auto and equipment when it comes to minor repairs of vehicles. So, those are the items that are allowed outright. I will read you the project description that was supplied to us as far as what the applicant would like to do on the property itself. I also sent a site plan to the planning commission as far as just kind of an idea of how they wanted to develop the property. And so, what they provided, project description-wise, is they want to have light commercial with a total of eight units, approximately eight hundred, eighteen hundred square feet each. Two units will be used for a childcare center. One unit will be used for a Taekwondo facility. And the other four units are not dedicated at this particular time, but they see small offices potentially in those units in the future. They go on to just kind of describe what would be included in the childcare as far as facilities that they would have there, restaurants, utility rooms, and that, and that type of thing, which isn't really relevant to the whole kind of description of what they wanted to do. As far as, you know, site requirements, since they've decided to follow commercial limited, they would have to come into those requirements. Your typical setbacks from the road, typical setbacks from property lines. Since you are abutting R two all around this property, there is also a requirement in regards to lighting, as far as all lighting would have to be, have a hooded lighting to where it would all be facing ground. You would have additional screening and landscaping requirements since you have less intensive properties around this. There is also an additional requirement that we have on commercial. When it comes to developing the property itself, when they got a building permit, they would have to either put in an additional ingress, egress lane along Hundred and Seventy-Eighth or Council, so they can do that themselves, or they can pay the county a fee in lieu of for that additional lane that's required. So, that's kind of the zoning perspective of it. I know a lot of folks in regards to the letters of protest that we have are concerned about the floodplain and how this is going to contribute to additional flooding. And so, I want to, I know the board is familiar with this, but for the folks that are here, if this is something that is approved by the Board of County Commissioners, the county has floodplain regulations that have to be met as well. So, in this case, since the property is in the floodway, they're going to have to do additional hydraulic flood studies there in the area to determine how they're going to deal with the floodwaters and potentially get that property out of the, out of the floodway itself. And so, what that typically looks like is they will work with FEMA, and the first process is the conditional letter of map revision that would be submitted to them based on the study that they've put together. They will submit that to FEMA. FEMA will review that, and as long as everything is met from FEMA's perspective, then that would be approved as far as just a conditional letter of map revision based on the study. Then, that will come to the county. The county has a floodplain management board, so the folks that were notified in this meeting, for this meeting today, would also be notified of the floodplain management board whenever that took place. Typically, when you go through FEMA with these type of studies, it's not a short process. You know, typically, you're looking from, you know, anywhere from nine to potentially eighteen months, depending on the questions that they ask. But really, the floodplain management board at that point becomes more of a, a process in which we just explain what FEMA is going to allow, so the general public understands what's going to be built out there. So, it's more of a formality at that point, because they're going to meet FEMA's specifications, which meet our specifications, because we take a lot of that information from them directly. So, then they will go out and build the flood improvements as well as the facility that they're wanting to build itself. Then they would have to go back to FEMA to do a letter of map revision to basically submit what is actually built and how those calculations of what's actually built is going to affect the floodplain up and downstream. FEMA will review that, and once that's approved, then the process is done. The floodplain maps in this particular area, depending on how far the effect is up and downstream, within the modified based on that. So, I just want to be clear to these folks that there are additional oversights that would have to be met in regards to the flood perspective.
I'm not saying we're approving it or not approving it, I'm not saying the Board of Commissioners is, or isn't, but there is a chance that, that you say that we did approve it, but FEMA could come back and say, no, you can't do this project.
Right, I mean, if they can't prove to FEMA that they can't, they can't get this property out of the floodplain or have any flood issues, that is correct. So, I know many of the folks that are here live in Carlton Lakes. Well, Carlton Lakes is an example, is in the floodplain. Now, it's not in the floodway, but it's in the floodplain, the portion that's kind of in the southeast part of that project. So, they had to go through, not only Oklahoma County, but FEMA, to utilize some of those lots that are in the floodplain. So, it's, the process they, they had to have to go through is, is more stringent compared to what Carlton Lakes went through, but they're similar in some regards that there's additional oversight.
I, I think it would be prudent of us at this point in time also to explain the process, so if, whatever decision we make still goes to the Board of County, we're making a recommendation, then it goes to the Board of County Commissioners, so they would have to come back for that meeting again to let their views be heard, either way. Just to be clear, so they know, so they don't think whatever decision made here today is final.
Right, that's correct. So, the planning commission is a recommending body. Typically, the Board of County Commissioners, that meeting will usually take place a couple of weeks later. We have to get it on their agenda, so folks are more than welcome to call our office, and we can let them know the specific time, or I'm sorry, the specific date. It'll be in this same room at nine o'clock in the morning, is the Board of County Commissioners meeting. The, the date is, is the thing that's unknown at this point.
And just to be clear, they don't get notified of that unless they call you and ask to be notified?
That is correct. There is no notification in the Board of County Commissioners that's sent to the property owners that have been notified of this meeting. If this is approved, the only other notification you would get would be if we get to the floodplain management board, you would get notified of that. Really, the Board of County Commissioners, if, no matter what direction, if it's approved or denied, they will still hear this item as well. But they will not hear any of the, if it is approved, any of the subsequent floodplain issues. That's only heard by the floodplain management board, not by the Board of County Commissioners.
Felt we should clarify that, given the number of protests we've seen. Anybody else have any questions for Eric? Is there anyone here who would like to talk in favor of this project? State your name and address, please.
Thomas Loggston, sixty-seven fifty-five Northwest Hundred and Seventy-Sixth Street, Edmond, Oklahoma. This, this project, at this point, we, it's culmination of about four years' worth of due diligence and study to bring, trying to bring this project to fruition. We've, we've had, we've had a geotechnical engineering firm test all the soils to see if it would support the, the structures and everything. We've done, as part of the FEMA process, we've done a due diligence on, and a endangered species study, whether any blader would not be affected, it's in the, it's, these are in the packet. And then, we've, we've, we've done a demographic study, abbreviated demographic study that indicates, in the last three years, have been over three thousand families, houses and families have been built just a mile north, or two miles north of this property, and the development is moving that way. Also, coming from Piedmont, there's been another thousand families that are moving in. And the reason for putting this out there is a shortage of childcare systems, and we've got a, a person that has signed up and wants this project to go and will develop and run the childcare system. The planning on the project is, where the buildings are being built in the southeast corner, so that, of the, of the lot, so that it would be removed from the, the other, whoever, whoever, for that. Or I can bring up, yeah. That's the, that's.
Eric, can you, was the microphone?
You want another one? Okay, the, the buildings, they're comprised of three buildings that will be built on the extreme southeast corner of the lot, and we've researched and complied with all the setbacks. And to separate it from the current residential area, have you noticed on the plot plan there, it says soccer field or common use area? And it's, it's normal in planning these things, when you have residential property, to create a buffer zone. And that, that thing is in there, we put soccer field because everybody knows what that is, but it would be a green zone or buffer zone between the housing, other housing in the area and the commercial. The traffic, there's a, I got to see some of the protest letters, and the, one of the things it says, it's, that the traffic would be extremely increased, and with five businesses that are going to be such things as an insurance agency, or a, some other office space, like a real estate office or something like that. We don't anticipate that there would be a, a large increase. We would like to have a convenience store. I've had several people that live north of there, and then found out about this, and they, it would be handy to have a, a place where they could stop off and get milk or bread, something like that, just a convenience store. We, we decided not to have a filling station because it's just too cumbersome to, with the regulations and everything for that, so it would just merely, merely be a quick pickup store if we were able to get one. The Taekwondo gym, it operates for four hours a day or three hours a day, usually after school until six, six, seven o'clock at night. They have one-hour classes. This is, it's a competitive thing, and Master Kim's proud that he's had several national champions from, from this gym, and have had people from this gym that actually participated in the Olympics, in the last Olympics. And so, it's, the, it's a limited access time for those people, and there's twenty students per class. And so, and then the, the childcare center, of course, it's going to have, its heaviest traffic, traffic ability would be from eight in the hour, six in the morning to eight, and then in the evening when people were picking up their children. The, we've looked at the, we, we started out with the study of the flood zone and what that wa, what, what was happening there, and about three years ago, the county raised Council Road and the bridge there, and what that did is that effectively reduced the backflow into the area where we're planning on building the, the building. And so, we, we went to the Corps of Engineers, and before we started the project, and asked them for, about the four oh four permit, and that, that hurdle was cleared, and the Corps of Engineers recommended that we, we brought on to the project Mr. Bill Smith, who's floodplain's management expert, one, of course, said that he's one of the top in Oklahoma, and I'm going to turn the floor over to him to explain the floodplain and what it, what is happening with it, because we can, we contend that based on the figures, it will not really affect, and the way the, the water flows out there, it shouldn't affect the neighborhoods in the area. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Smith. Yes, sir?
Before we do, is there any questions for the gentleman?
Yeah.
Is there city water at this site?
No. It's Deer Creek water. Deer Creek Water District serves this site.
And they're going to serve it?
Yes, we got, we sent them a letter and, and a plan, and, and they have some stringent requirements, but they said they would serve it. We're going to have to reapply because it's taken so long to get to this point that the, the application has expired, but I, I don't see any reason that they would not go ahead and approve it again.
But you don't have a letter from them saying they will?
Yes, there's a letter in the file, and we submitted from Deer Creek saying that they would submit, would provide water.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
When did that letter expire?
Ma'am?
When did the letter expire from Deer Creek water?
Uh, it's, it's expired about a month ago, a couple of months ago. We, it expired because it got lost in the mail, and we didn't receive it timely.
So, they have water at the street?
Yes.
Deer Creek water is at that street?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a Deer Creek water main on the south side of Hundred and Seventy-Eighth Street that was put in a couple of years ago. They're requiring us to add additional infrastructure for them to services. We'll be putting a loop around the entire, entire areas, and we'll have, we'll have a looped, loop system.
What type of building structures?
Sir?
What type of building structures?
It'll be a, a pre-engineered steel, red steel building, what I call red steel building. And then, it will have rock and, and, or brick, stucco type of a finish on it when we get the final design. We've just done the concept, but we're going to, but that, it's going to be a substantial, it's not going to be a, it's not going to be a metal shed.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Before we go on, we need to accept this. Do we need to formally accept this? Okay. Okay, so Eric, real quick, I make a motion for us to receive the hydraulic backwater modeling initial submittal report for Hundred and Seventy-Eighth and Council Road. Roll call, Eric?
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson, and Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Sir, if you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Bill Smith, two eight five oh eight West Forty-first Street, South Manford, Oklahoma. I came to Oklahoma in nineteen seventy-four, and I'm one of the very few full-time hydrologists in the state. This is my fifty-first year of doing this. In nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight, our Tulsa office, or the Tulsa office and the Oklahoma City office of the Benham Group, who I worked for at that time, did about sixty of the very first floodplain mappings in Oklahoma. And so, I've been doing floodplain management for forty-seven years. Part of what happened here, Mr. Kim and Mr. Loggston retained me to do an initial study of the impacts, floodplain impacts, and what would be necessary in order to allow this to develop in the floodway. What I'm showing you here is the full initial report. I didn't give you all the printouts, I just gave you some of the narrative so that you would understand that. On the first page, I kind of went through the development steps that would be necessary in order to do this from a floodplain management perspective. Eric helped us, as the floodplain administrator, to obtain the current effective models from FEMA, because we'd have to use those current effective models. They were nineteen seventy-six models. And so, even though the floodplain maps have changed periodically over time, the initial hydrology and hydraulic modeling that was done back in the seventies has never changed. So, this is, the study that I did was the first study that was, has been updated. I did a total new hydrology study on Soldier Creek, just to verify the flows that were in the FEMA model, the backwater model, and they came out pretty close. I did not take the time and effort to do Deer Creek because it's a huge watershed, but knowing that the Soldier Creek watershed came out pretty good for the flows, I, we, for the moment, we've just assumed that. So, whenever there's a property that's being developed that has two floodplanes, the higher of the base flood elevation, the hundred-year floodplain, is the regulatory one for any development in the floodplain or floodway. So, we have, I have modeled the proposed development both with a Soldier Creek model and with a Deer Creek model. And the bottom line is that with the compensatory storage, floodplain storage that's required under your ordinance, we can show no rise in the base flood elevation and zero rise in the floodway as a result of the proposed project. The buildings themselves are elevated two feet above the base flood elevation in accordance with your floodplain ordinance. The parking lots are elevated one foot above the base flood elevation in accordance with your floodplain ordinance. And so, the next step before the, the, once we, once the zoning change is, would be approved, if it's approved, the, then you get into time and expense, as Eric explained. The conditional letter of map revision has been roughly started. This document is a part of that, but we still have exhibits to do, final modeling to do after a final grading plan is developed. So, that would be the first step after the zoning change. And then, the, as Eric described, the, a conditional letter of map revision, because this is development in the floodway, would have to be performed. I will correct, Eric, it has to go to the floodplain board first before it goes to FEMA, because they have to sign off on the floodplain board. FEMA will not accept. FEMA will not accept a submittal unless it has been approved locally. And then the conditional letter map revision, once it's been reviewed and approved here locally, then it would go to FEMA. It is a nine to twelve to eighteen month process normally with the current administration wanting to eliminate FEMA. Everything's kind of up in the air. All of the submittals that I have made have gone to a snail's pace. So I have no idea if that would, that would be under normal conditions with what's going on. And then once they, but once, and, and the conditional letter map revision that FEMA submits or responds back if they approve it is merely, it's like the field of dreams. If you build it like this, we will approve a letter of map revision at the end. So that, once that is approved, then final development plans would be done. Floodplain development permit would be applied for, a building permit would be applied for. It would be constructed and then a final survey would be done. And then we kind of start the process over again and prepare a letter of map revision because that's the only official change to the floodplain map. And basically what would happen is the buildings and the parking lots would be shown as islands with floodplain around it. And so that would be the, that's the last part. And once, once the, once FEMA approves that, again, it would go to the floodplain board, it would go to FEMA. And then once FEMA reviews and approves it, then it would come back as a formal letter of map revision with maps on it that would, would show, show the islands of the elevated structures that are above the floodplain and floodway. Those are the kind of the steps. And so the report that I did back in March of twenty-two kind of summarizes the results that we have done. Like I say, all of the runs and everything I did not include, but normally this, that my floodplain stuff doesn't come in front of a zoning board. The zoning board acts on that first, but because of that, that's why I was asked to come and just kind of give you a little summary of what's going on.
A quick question on item number three. Is that a, I hate to say this, but is that a?
That's a typo.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that wasn't something.
I, no, I saw that. It's an apology.
Any other questions for them? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to talk in favor of this project? Okay, hearing and seeing none. By a show of hands, how many people here want to talk against this project? Okay, so what I'm going to ask for, first of all, courtesy of time, is let's keep our comments down to three to five minutes. Second thing is let's try not to repeat ourselves. If somebody ahead of you has already addressed an issue, just don't keep repeating the same thing over and over again. So with that said, uh, would you come up one at a time, give us your name and address? And also direct your comments to us, not to the individual putting in the petition. And second of all, uh, yeah, that'll work. Okay, so who wants to go first? She put her hand up. I'd make her go first. And state your name and address, please?
Hello, Jim Pincher.
You can raise that up if you want.
Jim Pincher, fourteen eight oh three Remington. I'm, I'm not sure how much my comments or input will affect this board based on what I'm hearing with the processes. But I just, uh, wanted to give you a little history on this corner. I've, uh, I've been a builder and developer for thirty years. And, uh, so I have a lot of experience in these kind of projects. Um, I am not a, an expert in hydrology, like, uh, I forgot his name, but anyway. But I am an expert in construction and this kind of project. And I'm also an expert on what happens on this corner because for approximately five years, I lived in the old, really cool farmhouse right on the west side of this, this proposal. So in the, uh, the five years that I lived there, we had five wicked floods. I don't, y'all, ever been to this corner when it floods? So, so one seventy-eighth will be underwater from the stop sign a good quarter mile to the west. And, and I, I would venture to guess that parts of one seventy-eighth are probably a foot and a half, two feet underwater. And the subject property is two or three feet below it. I've never measured it, but that's what it looks like. So I can tell you from personal experience, when we have a good flood, it, it breaks over the bank of the creek to the west, comes in and that whole queep field in that low area there hits the rock wall around my old house there and goes onto one seventy-eighth and through, sometimes through the rock wall into there. And this, this house is in particular, it's just, you can't get in or out when this happens. I think even, uh, four or five years ago, just on the east side of the intersection, a woman was swept off the road and, and lost her life. So there's pretty wicked floods there, lots of water. This, uh, subject property, I was never willing to get out in there during a big flood because the flow of water is so strong and it's probably a good three to four feet deep in spots there. So I, I just, this is just my personal opinion, which doesn't hold much weight. I, I don't see, there's nowhere else for this water to go. So, um, again, I'm not an expert in hydrology, but I am an expert on this corner and what it's like to have floodwaters there. I do believe that a portion of this property under, under the old map is in the floodway. I don't know how much of it, but some of it is. So, uh, that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
My name is Robert Holt Smith. I live at one eight zero one one Carlton Way. I was a developer of Carlton Lake subdivision and I currently live in that development. I developed it with two to three acre lots to give it a country feel so that the people who moved there would have wide open spaces. And one of the reasons I picked this location also was the fact that the surrounding property was in the floodway. And I was under the impression that nothing would be built in the floodway. But I now realize that you can build things in the floodway if you mitigate the water flow and you don't impact or impair the flooding situation. The previous person talked about this lot, six acres, being below council and below one hundred and seventy-eighth. With all due respect, it serves as a detention pond right now. A six acre detention pond that's suddenly going to disappear. And also our ambiance of country living is going to disappear. The people surrounding here recognize and are longtime farmers and tend to keep it essentially country living. So others will speak to conditions and, uh, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, members of the commission. I'm Laura Holmes and I live at two one two oh four Bogie Road, which is near the intersection of county law, or council and two oh six. I drive downtown to work every day, five days a week, and my route is always down council. I would only echo what others have said that this is a six acre detention pond. The last few months have shown us with all the rain we've had that this area is going to flood almost every time we get that amount of rain and stay flooded for a period of time. It does not dissipate within just a twenty-four hour period. Um, and thanks to the county, new bridges have been built, which has solved some of the flooding on the roadway, the new bridges on one hundred and seventy-eighth and on council. But more importantly to all of this is a couple of things. One, this county has developed a master plan and this is zoned as R two for a reason. The people who live out there, myself included, we decide that we will drive farther to get to a grocery store or a convenience store or a liquor store or to take our kids to school, whatever those things are because we want to live there. And so it's zoned R two for that reason. And as the individual who developed Carlton Way area said, that was the purpose. And I've spoken to you all before about maintaining that because that is part of the master plan. There are plenty of places for people to go live on a half acre lot with a convenience store at the corner that their kids can ride a bike to. This isn't it. Um, I also want to point out, um, a couple of other things. There's traffic. I've been before this commission before where you all have talked about traffic and that the county does not have the ability to make four lane roads with, uh, traffic lights everywhere out here. Those are going to continue to be two lane roads with four, four-way stops. And that traffic just backs up and backs up. Go to one hundred and sixty-fourth and Rockwell, one hundred and fiftieth and Rockwell. When PACOM lets out, right? These people live it every day with me too. Okay? Try to get home in the evenings to go down Rockwell or council and wait for thirty minutes at a four-way stop, even with a police officer directing traffic. That's not going to get any better by adding more commercial to an area that's meant to be rural. There are places in the master plan that are zoned for commercial. You've already rezoned one hundred and seventy-eighth or, or provided for one hundred and seventy-eighth and MacArthur to be commercial. And it has some commercial there. They've built three new sets of buildings on the southeast side. But part of that still sits empty. It's not even been fully occupied in the four or five years that it's been built. We have new commercial development going in with a storage facility at one hundred and sixty-fourth and council. You have commercial development at one hundred and sixty-fourth and Rockwell. And you have commercial development all along Portland. There is not a need for more commercial development in this area. Uh, in, in addition, if there was a desire to have commercial development, it would seem far more appropriate for a PUD to be done because Mr. Kim may rezonate a commercial and say, we're not going to put a filling station or gas station in, but he could sell it right afterwards and there'd be no limitation on that. It would now be zoned, although I think Eric said a restaurant can be done, but without selling alcohol. But we don't need another liquor store there either. Or a dispensary for that matter. So, um, and while they addressed that Deer Creek Water is going to provide water service, I did not see anything or hear anything addressed about sewer. Currently I'm aware, because I work with Oklahoma City Public Schools and Deer Creek Schools, that the city of Oklahoma City is not accepting any new clients for the treatment facility at two oh six in Portland. That they have limited some of the development from the city of Oklahoma City because that facility is at eighty percent capacity. So where's the sewer going to be for this? That wasn't addressed. And lastly, I would also note, those of you who have ever driven by there, Mr. Kim, according to the county assessor, has owned this property since nineteen ninety-eight. And for as long as I have been living in this area of Deer Creek, there's been a for sale sign on it. And it obviously is now, he's going to try to develop it in a different way and get it sold. And my expectation would be that that is exactly what happens, is that it gets sold uh, once it's rezoned for commercial because then there'll be no limitations except for what the county has for light commercial. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to be anywhere near as good as she was.
She's a seasoned professional. We, we've talked to her.
I will try. Uh, you said don't repeat points. There's been several points made about floodplain, uh, traffic and road safety. Uh, first of all, I'm sorry, my name's Aaron McCaslin, six eight three three Spring Run, which is one hundred and seventy-eighth and Rockwell, basically. Uh, and we know that there's a lot of traffic increase, increase out there. Um, another issue is law enforcement coverage. Oklahoma County covers that area and I know that they're stretched thin, just like all law enforcement is, but they're out in the county. And I've seen times when Oklahoma City has to help cover calls out there because they only have two, three, four deputies to cover the whole area. So that, that's an issue of concern. And, you know, obviously you guys know if we increase population, less coverage for the people. Um, preservation of agricultural and rural land, we all moved out there for a reason, to get away from the city. We don't want the city to build around us. That's what we moved out there to get away from. So we want to preserve it the best that we can. And like, like she said, we don't mind driving a little bit further. We made that choice. We're there because we want to be. Property values, uh, we're concerned that if you start bringing, bringing, uh, commercial development, stuff like that in around the homes that are there, it may negatively impact property values. Obviously, none of us want that. And just increase of, of people and all, all the things that it brings. My, and I'm concerned that once you open this can of worms with one commercial development, that just continues. And then suddenly what we moved out there to be in no longer exists. So that's probably about all I have, but.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to time myself because I want to make sure I'm within some time because I'm really hungry. My name is Andred. I live at one five seven zero five Valcourt in Edmond, Oklahoma. I'm a estate broker and also a private investigator for the state of Oklahoma. Uh, I want to bring, uh, two different perspectives. The first one is, uh, I wish FEMA, instead of providing this, uh, one dimensional map, I wish they provided a three dimensional map because if you have a floodplain that wide, the size of a football field and it's only a foot deep, that's much different than being six to eight feet deep. I've had the luxury to help, uh, remove the water from the basement that's on the house adjacent to this lot several times. I want to bring to your attention that, uh, I believe it was about four or five years ago when we had a major flood there. There was a, a lady that drowned in a red SUV that got washed off the street right on that intersection. So the question that I'm going to ask the commission and FEMA is, is this project making that any better or worse, number one? Number two, are we increasing the probability of having something similar occur since we're increasing the density? Thank you.
One second. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Hey, we're not leaving until she talks.
I'm probably the tallest person here, so here we go. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Mick Ferguson. I'm the father of four beautiful kids. Uh, my wife and I are local business owners.
What's your address?
Uh, eighty-two hundred Northwest, one hundred and seventy-eighth street. We're directly beside this proposed, uh, uh, rezoning. Um, so we live at eighty-two hundred Northwest Street, a house that has stood over a century in our neighborhood. Many still refer to it as the Harper House after the family called it home for decades. Today, most people, especially the kids, know it as the Treehouse House because we built a big, beautiful tree house and a century old walnut tree that stands proudly in our backyard. We are not just homeowners, we are caretakers of history. We moved here to protect a home that holds generations of stories, laughter and resilience. And part of that resilience comes from something that doesn't get talked about enough, the land itself. Our property adjacent there is being proposed for rezoning. It sits within a FEMA designation as regulatory floodway, not just a floodplain, but the most vulnerable part of the watershed where storm water naturally flows and escapes for more, escapes. For more than a hundred years, our home has stood strong, never once damaged by the flooding, besides weeping in the basement, uh, precisely because the area has remained undeveloped and able to breathe and absorb the water that nature brings. Now that there's a proposal to rezone this land from R two rural to commercial light limited to make way for businesses like a daycare, a martial arts studio, even the soccer club. As a parent of four kids, we have a standard operation procedure when it floods. You're raising this development six, eight feet up in the air, it's going to flood. As a parent, my kids know what to do. We don't go outside. We call dad. We get out of there. And those kids that are coming to a daycare or a martial arts studio, they're going to think it's cool. They're going to want to check it out. That doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense. When I was reading over the resolution, number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine five zero, the number one thing in section C is protect human life and health. This isn't just technicality. It's about preserving the natural flow of water that protects our homes like ours. Homes that are older than zoning maps, older than ordinances, until now protected by both geography and common sense. Homes that are older than zoning maps, older than ordinances, until now protected by both geography and common sense. This rezoning isn't just about traffic or noise. Though those are real concerns for families, including mine, it's about risking flood damage to homes that have never seen it in over a hundred years. It's about endangering trees older than many of us and compromising the land's ability to protect us. So the developer may or may not turn a profit by flipping it. We are not against growth. We are against reckless change that ignores history, environment, and the families that have poured their lives into this place. Please don't erase over a century of safe stewardship with a single vote. Please don't risk what makes this neighborhood special. I ask you as a parent, from parent to parent, neighbor to neighbor, to deny, deny this zoning change. Thank you for your time and consideration and may God bless.
One second. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Tom Fisher, nineteen six seventy-five Sportsman's Lake. Wanted to remind the panel that several years ago, we had a similar situation at the corner of two oh six and council. They wanted, excuse me, they wanted to do a R two to commercial. You guys turned it down. Hope you do it the same with this. Any questions?
Thanks, sir.
You bet.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Caroline Ferguson. I live at eighty-two hundred Northwest, one seventy eighth Street. I'm fourteen years old and my biggest concern with the rezoning from R two to commercial is safety. How many of y'all have a daughter? How many of y'all would do anything to keep her safe? Human trafficking hotline dot org reported two hundred and ten victims of trafficking in Oklahoma in twenty twenty-four. Eighty-two of those people were a victim of sex trafficking. I'm the oldest of four and it concerns me not only that I am a woman, but I have younger siblings that could just as easily be taken. Last year, Isabel Brown, a forty-three year old woman, was held at gunpoint and kidnapped on, at Coffee Jerks on one seventy eighth North MacArthur. That is about one mile away from my house. This occurred in broad daylight in a commercial strip center like the one Mr. Kim would be putting right next door to my home. I don't want to have to live in constant fear of my safety. So please prayerfully consider my request and the request of the community to deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Any questions? Well done. Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Ferguson and I live at eighty-two hundred Northwest, one seventy eighth Street. And I live directly next to the property proposed for rezoning from R two residential to commercial. I'm here today not just as a homeowner, but as a mother of four children who made a very intentional choice about where to raise her family. My husband and I moved our family here from the hustle and bustle of the Dallas Fort Worth area. We were searching for peace, space and a way of life that allowed our kids to grow up outdoors, exploring, playing, learning and using their imaginations. We don't allow gaming devices in our home. Instead, our children spend their time riding dirt bikes, four wheelers, playing in their amazing treehouse, fishing and being fully engaged with the land around them. That's what this home and the R two zoning made possible for us. The proposed rezoning would change all of that, allowing commercial development next door would bring noise, lights, traffic and unfamiliar, unfamiliar people into our area that is currently safe, quiet and residential. It would rob my children of the freedom and security they currently have to roam, play and grow in the outdoors. I fear I would no longer feel comfortable letting them play outside and that loss is immeasurable to a mother. This isn't just about our home, it's about the entire community. After speaking with many of our neighbors, they feel the exact same way that we all moved here for the same reasons, to escape the noise, to raise families, to enjoy a lifestyle that's becoming harder and harder to find. A commercial development would be inconsistent with the surrounding area and would fundamentally change the character of our neighborhood. I urge you to think beyond land use classifications and planning documents. Please consider the very real personal impact this decision would have on my family, my children, and so many others who call this community home. Denying this rezoning request means preserving the lifestyle that we've worked so hard to build, one that prioritizes safety, family values and the outdoors. Please vote no on this rezoning request. Protect what makes our neighborhood special, not just for me, but for all the families who have moved here with the same hopes we have. Thank you.
Any questions? We got to come see this treehouse.
You don't need to come see the treehouse.
Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none. Anybody have any questions for Eric before we move on?
I did want to make a comment as far as this map. Is there another slide? Okay. So if you go back to the one with the Xs on it, those Xs represent protests that we receive. Now, I do want to point out that there is significant more than what's displayed on this map. We just focused on the area itself. I do want to point out to the folks that are here, it doesn't matter to this board, but the Board of County Commissioners. The property that is protesting directly to the west and the one directly to the south represents a significant protest. So that becomes important when it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. Whatever decision this board makes, that board can overturn that decision. But if they do so, they have to do it unanimously because of the significant protest. So I just want to point that out.
Anybody have any questions? Sure.
Eric, so on this here, based on the fact that we're not allowed to go for the commercial limited, but ask more for a P U D. If the fact is, do they even have a contract with anybody for the proposed units that are going in the building?
Well, as far as the buildings and tenants and all that, we don't get involved with that. But in regards to your other question, as far as planned unit development, just kind of explain the difference between planned unit development and straight zoning, in this case, commercial limited. Commercial limited, the county's zoning regulations basically define what is allowed, permitted outright. What would be a special use permit in the future if there was someone else that came along, which requires an additional step, an additional public meeting if there was ever to be someone else who owned the property who want to do a special use permit in this particular piece of property if it was rezoned to commercial limited. So my point being is that the county's regulation dictates what can, it can occur there as far as straight zoning. The P U D allows the property owner to eliminate some uses or even add some uses. They can modify the setback requirements. They can modify any of the requirements the county has. In a P U D, really it boils down to planning commission and the Board of County Commissioner accepting those changes. Like I said, commercial limited is really one of the least intensive. You couldn't do rural commercial here. And well, you could, you could do commercial, rural commercial here, which is significantly less as far as the number of uses that you could do. But it really doesn't incorporate what they want to do with the property as far as the daycare facility, the Taekwondo facility. You can do that in rural commercial. Rural commercial, you really get into more of your feed stores, veterinarian type of uses when you get into rural commercial. Highway commercial is the next. You couldn't do that here because it doesn't meet the qualifications for highway commercial. So you could do commercial limited or you can do commercial general, which is our most intensive zoning category. So a P U D would allow them to eliminate ad uses. I don't know how beneficial that would be in this case, to be honest with you, because most of these uses, at least in, in my opinion, as far as dealing with these regulations over the last twenty odd some years, I would say most of these are pretty subdued overall. I mean, I can, I can understand the liquor store for sure. That's one of the common ones that we hear that most people would like to do away with. A lot of these uses in regards to, as an example, a movie theater there. Obviously, you can never do anything like that there. So I think what it, what it boils down to is I could see your animal services grooming kennels, veterinarians, offices as far as local offices, urgent cares, you know, your eating establishment sit, sit down type facility without alcohol, all those I could see. So I, I'm not sure what you would really eliminate from this list that isn't really eliminated automatically besides, besides maybe the liquor store. So I don't know how much benefit you would get out of a P U D besides a couple of those. But obviously, if, if that's the route that they wanted to go, we would start this process all over again because all these folks were notified of commercial limited. That's what they applied for. That's what we're hearing today. So if they wanted to go that route, they would either, either have to withdraw this application or if they wanted to follow this through and see how it turned out, if it was ultimately denied by the Board of County Commissioners, they could wait a ninety day period before they could submit a P U D if that's what they wanted to do in the future.
Just as a point of procedure, all we can do is rule on number six. We can't require them to change to a P U D or something like that. We're just here to vote whether we approve or deny what they're asking for.
Right, that would, right, that would be their decision if they wanted.
Any other questions?
Do we have any questions for Stacy?
I have a couple of comments. Regardless of what's built on this site. In a commercial project, you have to widen these roads. So one hundred and seventy eighth and council will both be widened. So the calculation for what they're doing for compensatory floodway will have to change. Because I get the right of way first and the road first before the storage. And then the compensatory storage is in the same spot as their presenting septic system. So you're mixing floodwater with storm or sanitary water. So I'm not sure how that works. I might hear an explanation on that at some point.
So I may be able to answer some of those questions. So in regards to the additional lane that is required from our regulations, they have an option of building it or a fee in lieu of. So I just want to be clear to these folks that if the property owner doesn't build it, you may not see that lane for quite some time because basically that money is earmarked to the county for whatever the cost of the construction of that lane is. And then whenever the county goes to widen either one hundred and seventy eighth or council road, then it would be incorporated at that point in time. So it may not.
There to be a hole there that I'm trying to build a road.
Sure. I just want, I just want to make sure that these folks understand that if they pay the fee in lieu of that road, additional lane ingress and egress may not show up for quite some time. And in regards to sanitary sewer, or I'm sorry, as far as septic that may be or aerobic that's on this, a particular piece of property for wastewater treatment, our floodplain regulation holds them to a higher standard in that regard too. So I'm sure Mr. Smith can talk to it better than I can, but there are backflow preventers. There's, there's numerous things that can be done to make sure that the waste that is there on the site is contained to the site. And that's one of the requirements that we have in our floodplain regulation that it's contained. It can't flow out into surface waters if there is a flooding.
Any other questions for Stacy? Any other comments, Stacy? With all that said, I'll entertain a motion to either approve slash deny item number six. Got that marquee? Roll call, Eric?
Mr. Murray. Mr. Jewel. Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Davis.
Yes. Before we move on to item number seven, just want to reiterate that this will come out again with the Board of County Commissioner. A couple of weeks after this meeting, please see Eric and make sure he has your name so you can know when that meeting is. So thank you for your time today. I'll let you have something to add.
Just probably the best thing to do is just contact me. Give me, it's, it's going to take with, Fourth of July coming up. It's going to take a little bit. So you may want to give me a call. Maybe towards on July third, potentially. I will have a date specified at that time because I want to get with the applicants as well. Because they have the ability to select those dates as well. So just give me a call.
Okay, I said after the meeting. I didn't say right after the meeting.
Wow.
But good for the clarification. Okay. Item number seven, discussion of possible action to receive the May twenty twenty-five fee fund and expense report. Good news, Eric?
I mean, we're in the black, twenty-four hundred dollars, but so far so good. We have a month left. The new fiscal year begins in July. So we'll see what happens. My, my guess is we, we may, we may make it in the black, not by much, but.
All right. Let's go ahead and I'll receive a motion to receive that before we get in trouble with other comments. So can I second it? So roll call, Eric?
Mr. Murray. Mr. Jewel. Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Davis.
Yes. Okay, item number eight, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, section three, one, one point nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have reasonably been foreseen prior to the time or posting of this agenda. Eric, do we have any new business?
No, sir.
It's, do you want to just make a quick statement about Mr. DeFort, if you're here?
I, he, his term came up and so he decided not to stay on the planning commission. That information has been forwarded to District One and so from my understanding, they're looking for someone to replace him.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call?
Mr. Murray. Mr. Jewel. Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Davis.
Yes.